Yeah, we can hear.
All set to start. This is Brian from Cable.
Okay, Brian. Let me know when you're ready.
You're good to go, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, Dan.
All right, we are having a board of selectmen's meeting and our agenda with Governor Baker, March 12th, March 12th, 2020 ought to suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter 30A, section 20, this meeting will be held in an online conference mode hosting on zoom.com. And members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast by Comcast 12 and can also be reviewed via live streams WHCA TV. It will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. And our subject of old business is the fee agreement for special counsel with environmental site work. Discussion representative from the Mass DEP. The process for site assessment at 602 Bedford Street. Before we start our meeting, Kyle Kwolski would like to make a statement if he could, and Kyle, if you would.
Yes, I just, I just want to, to read into the record my email to the board of selectmen last night. Fellow board members, and that will explain your opening the meeting, Dan. Fellow board members, after much consideration, I had decided to resign my position as Chair of your board effective today, which was yesterday, October 27th, 2020. There are times even in our current Zoom world when a chair must be available for in-person events and meetings. And unfortunately, I cannot do so for reasons of health. I did hold such a meeting today because of its critical importance, but I can no longer do so. I've spoken with Vice Chair Salvucci, and he is willing to assume the duties of Chair for the rest of the 2021 term. Accordingly, he will chair the two Zoom meetings this week, this one that we're in now and one tomorrow morning, and all subsequent meetings. I will continue to serve as selectman, just not as Chair. Thank, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to serve you as Chair for such a long time. And I look forward to my continued services as a member. Please join me in wishing Dan well and providing him with all of our support. Thanks, Dan.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Thank you for all the years that you've done and and hope that you begin to feel a lot better and feel a lot more comfortable in your position during these trying times of illness around.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dan.
Absolutely. Um, now it's, do we need a motion to go into the old business as far as the fee agreement? Do I hear a motion for discussion?
Don't move, Brian.
Fucking right.
All right, around the, around the board, Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin? Justin here?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, that being said, Lisa, can you introduce the members that of the DP that will be here and that will be speaking on the issue?
Yes, good morning, everybody. Actually, I see we have Kate Carvalho with us, who is the lead on 602 Bedford Street, which is the former Decore Novelties building. We also have with us Kate's team, which I will defer to Kate to introduce. But I do want to introduce, we have joining with us this morning Attorney Sean Murphy, Attorney Jeffrey Thompson, who are going to speak about a project that they are looking for a building, a property, and 602 Bedford has caught their eye. They are with a program called Hope for Heroes. And I will let them again introduce their their pro, the program as it, as it pertains to veterans and their future, their vision for 602 Bedford. So with that said, I will introduce Kate.
Okay.
Thank you all. My name is Lisa, that is Kate Carvalho. I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection in the Brownfields C and E and Risk Reduction Section. I'm joined by Alan Angela Gallagher and John Handerhand, and I will allow them to introduce themselves as well. John?
Hey, good morning, everyone. Um, so we are part of the team at DEP in the Southeast Region that oversees the cleanup of hazardous waste sites. As Kate indicated, our specialty is brownfields and enforcement actions. That's, that's what our team basically does. We've also asked to come along to the meeting today, Mary Ellen DeFrias from Mass Development. She is often an integral partner with DEP in getting sites such as these moving and cleaned up, redeveloped. So she's a key player in this, and we thought she would be an integral part of the meeting. So Angela, you want to say hi?
Yes, hi, I'm Angela Gallagher with Mass DEP Beer Voice and Cleanup, working with John and Kate. And actually, I work quite a bit with Mary Ellen as well on Brownfields projects. I hope I can answer your questions today.
Okay, that being said, after she said you'd answer your questions, a little bit of a, some, well, we'll say some rules. If someone has, yes, Kyle?
Hi, Dan, I, I'd like to make a point of order here. I'm not, I'm not sure that the agenda reflects the fact that we're going to have people from that Lisa just introduced. Agenda doesn't reflect that they're here to discuss the matter. The matter is our fee agreement for special counsel. We had asked that the Mass DEP graciously accepted our invitation to speak to us about that. I'm not sure if this is the proper time to, to introduce people who are introduced, who are interested in making a project on that. And I'd just like to make that as a point of order. There may be, there may be, there may be a time when it would be great to talk to them. I'm not, I'm not sure if our limited agenda this morning is that time.
Okay, good point made, Kyle. Well, what I'd like is that once we, we go over the fee, the fee agreement and what, what's it involved and the fact that the biggest concern that most people have on this board, I think, is that the, that the town is not held responsible for any particular cleanup of that site. And that we want to be assured that although we want that site to be, become a useful site, we do not want it at any cost to the town. That's, I think that's the main concern. Am I right there for the board?
Right, right. And I, I understand the, the reasoning behind having the other, the other people be here, because that could lend some lend some substance to the idea that we don't want to be responsible for cleaning it up. On the other hand, wasn't mentioned on the agenda. And that's, that's just, that's just my point.
Okay, all right. So then what we'll do is during this meeting, we'll discuss the process of getting it cleaned up, if in fact, as long as the town financially does not become responsible. Yes?
Mr. Chair, if I may. I completely agree with Mr. Kwolski's point of order here. I, I think obviously I've probably been the biggest thorn in everyone's side on this project, so on this proposal so far. When I say the word project, I think that's what we need to, why I firmly stand behind Mr. Kwolski's point, is that up until 9:00 AM this morning and hearing from these people joining our meeting right now, we have never been told there was a project. I think that will be some concern as Ms. Carvalho and her team proceed forward as we start to talk about brownfields and some of the key components, as I understand them, being a reuse plan and redevelopment. So I would just not like to see the impression made that our board is aware that there is an interested party when we clearly were not made aware of this prior to this meeting.
Okay, point taken. Well, then I guess, I guess what we're going to have to do is that we'll go through this meeting. We will listen to the proposition as far as the cleaning up process, making sure that we are not held responsible, the town, at any point. I do not want to end up the state coming to us or the federal government coming to us saying, look, it's your responsibility, you don't own it, but what we're willing to do is having somebody else look at that and then maybe in the future have somebody come in and do the work as far as going to the registry of deeds and what has to be done if they want to use the project, use the site.
Right, these, these gentlemen today are absolutely in the process, following line. But again, going back to where I've started some questioning on this, I think their presentation to our board, one of our meetings, probably should have been one of the first steps. And then, and then we proceed if they presented themselves as an interested party. And I'm sure Ms. Carvalho and her team may be able to expound on that a little bit more, but it's how I interpret.
Okay, Brian, yes.
Yeah, I guess I want to make a bit of a disclosure, I guess. Plum County Commissioner Sandra Wright is an acquaintance of mine. And many, many months ago, we had a discussion about a project that she was involved with, which is this veterans home projects that are going on all over the, the area. And we were in a casual discussion as to that she was looking for sites, and I made the suggestion about the Decore Novelty property many, many months ago, that she should contact at the time, Frank Lyndham, the town administrator, to discuss that particular site. I knew nothing about the ownership and, you know, really the, the condition of the land. I just knew that it was, it was vacant for a long time. And I thought it would be a good location for something like this in proximity to all the facilities that were in the area, the supermarkets and et cetera, et cetera. So I just gave her the information and had a contact Frank. And beyond that, I stepped away from it. But I wanted the board to know that that, in fact, was how this got started.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, if, Dan, if I might.
Very kind.
The, I, I think the reason why the, like Katie Carvalho was here to talk, to talk about the process by which the town deals with 902 Bedford Street. Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
No feedback now. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the people from Hope for Heroes being here, and I, I I don't mean to, to step on their toes by my point of order. It's just that when I looked at, when I looked at the agenda this morning, I realized that they're not mentioned on it. I talked to Lisa yesterday. I asked her why Sandra Wright was going, was going to be involved in the meeting. And the way, the way Lisa explained it to me yesterday was that they would be, that they're kind of a insurance policy for us as we look through the, the, this problem about the fee for the lawyers for the environmental site work. Wasn't until this morning that I realized that perhaps it should have been mentioned on the agenda that was set up a couple of, a week ago or so. What I think the best thing for us to do right now would be to hear from the Mass DEP. They, they arranged their schedule so that they could talk to us and maybe give us a better idea of the process that we need. At the, at the same time, totally thankful for Brian's work with Sandra Wright and the Hope for Heroes. And hopefully something can work out there. But I think the first order of business would be to deal with the issue at hand, which is whether or not we want to spend money on a, on fees for special counsel to do environmental site work. And whether or not that makes us liable in any way for cleanup on the, on the area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I also think that if, if members of the Hope for Heroes want to, I say stay on this meeting for their personal information, knowing what our process is going to be. And then eventually, once they know what our process is, maybe they could deal with Mass DEP on their own.
Okay, that, that's great. That makes sense.
That makes sense, everybody?
And just to also add that we're not just talking about 602 Bedford Street, we're also talking about the property.
A regal property.
Regal property, yes.
Yes. Okay, that being said, all right, does, Lisa, you want to get the process going as far as having Mass DEP start, step in and start with letting us know exactly what's, what we need to get done?
Yes. So as, as we all know, this process that I started was a few months back, where I had some conversations with Mary Ellen DeFrias from Mass Development. We talked about site assessment grants. We talked about the regal property. We talked about 602 Bedford, which is the former Decore Novelties building. We discussed applying for site assessment grants just to have a licensed site professional go in and evaluate and identify the ground pollution around both the properties. Regal Street would be at the phase three site assessment and Bedford Street, Walmart Decore Novelties would be a phase one site assessment. And there's been many, many discussions on the risk to the town, although we have no ownership in the 602 Bedford. It is an abandoned property. There's been many discussions over the risk to the town if we were to proceed with any type of site assessments that the town would then become liable for any cleanup for the property. And we just want to hopefully put that to rest today in knowing that we can move forward if the town were to be awarded a grant to identify the ground pollution at Decore Novelties and then continue with phase three site assessment for Regal so that we could get a better idea on any type of remediation costs. Also for Bedford Street as well, so for the two properties.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. So, so then we need somebody like to speak from the Deep Mass DEP from dealing with it? So who's, who do you want to speak next on this issue?
I think that's going to be me, John Handerhand.
Okay, John, thank you.
Sure. Um, so it sounds like from the conversation that I'm hearing parts of this morning is some people on the town have some basic liability questions with regard to these sorts of projects. And they're actually pretty straightforward. In the simplest scenario, if the, if the town were to take this property for back taxes and then find an interested party to sell the property to, the town would never have any liability under that chain. That's how the Brownfield Statute of 1998 describes it. That's, that's the simplest project. And the, and the new developer would then come in and would have to talk to the department with respect to next stages of cleanup. And the department would not force the town of Whitman to do anything with regard to that. Now, that's sort of the simplest route. Most towns, quite frankly, don't take that simplest route. Most towns, when they take properties like these for back taxes, do engage environmental professionals. Because what they fundamentally discover through, through economics more than anything is that if the town were to take the property, they often discover that if they were to do some of the cleanup work themselves and just doing, doing cleanup work does not make the town liable for this problem. Just if they were to do the cleanup work themselves, they ultimately make the property more marketable and get, quite frankly, more money for it. So a lot of, lot of towns sort of do like a balance where they work with an environmental professional and the environmental professional says, you know, if we do $50,000, $100,000 more worth of work out here, we probably elevate the property's value considerably to a, to a redeveloper. And that might make more attractive redevelopers come into the town proposing projects. Most towns work with entities like Mass Development and EPA to get funding for cleanup actions like these, so the towns don't have to put sort of quote money out of their own pockets into doing some of these cleanup works. But at any given time in the process, the town could say, we're, we're all done with our cleanup work. We're all done with our assessment. We don't want to do anymore. We don't want to get involved anymore. We just want, at this point in time, we just want to sell it. We found someone who's interested. We like their project. We're going to sell it to them. So just because you start some investigation work at a property like Decore, you are not obligated as a town, having taken the property for back taxes, to carry the football all the way, all the way over the, the final, the final goal line. You could stop at any given time. Now, just as, as an aside, just so you sort of realize a little bit about this site, when you start to think of long-term, the depart, this is, the department doesn't spend Commonwealth resources frequently. There's a small, small subset of sites that, over the years, we've spent money on because we thought that there was public health concerns that needed to be addressed that the property owner, for whatever reason, wasn't able to address. So the Commonwealth has spent considerable resources out here. And Kate's responsible for a lot of them in ensuring that the neighborhood has been protected from this site while it sort of sat dormant without an active owner. So the Commonwealth has a lien on this property for past costs. So when the time comes that the theoretically, the town of Whitman has taken the property for back taxes and has a developer at the table that they want to sell the property to, the Commonwealth is going to be at that table as well looking to recoup their past costs. Now, our past costs are considerable. And we recognize that the mathematical formula might not work. Our costs might outweigh the value of the property. So those costs are things that the lawyers in Boston do negotiate. Like if we have to take a hit, then basically, you know, we would be looking for the town of Whitman to take a hit on what their back taxes are. So everybody has sort of skin in the game. That's how that would work. But unlike many sites where towns take a property and then sell it, and we are not part of that selling process, the Commonwealth would be at the table for this one because of a lien we have on the property. So does that start to help a little bit?
Yeah, yes, Randy, go ahead.
Just a couple of questions from me to John at this point, just a couple of things that he, to clarify for myself. In your simplest, in the simplest process, you say take ownership, so the town should have ownership of the property before looking for a developer?
Um, well, because of how a tax taking works, and you guys know this infinitely better than I do, there is a process involved and there's notices, there's, there's a timeframe. Basically, a town can't say on Monday, we want to, we want to act on pack, past taxes and have control of the property on Friday. It's just, it's a long drawn out process. Many towns sort of start that process simultaneously with starting to work with redevelopers and getting interest in the property. So those two tracks can happen at the same time. Just because I know some, I know some towns that it's taken literally years from the time the tax taking starts to they actually control the property.
Right, and, and our treasurer has, has said it will be a several year process. Not only do you have liens on this property, there is also a $5 million lien on this property and a, another $100,000 lien. So several liens to clear up. Now, one of the things you said at any time, we could step away if we started the process. What if we found imminent hazard? If there's an imminent hazard, who at that point becomes?
Sure, so that's, it's actually pretty straightforward. So in a, in a scenario like this, an imminent hazard, considering how much work basically Kate has done out here, an imminent hazard scenario would be, is if you engaged an LSP and the LSP went out sort of into the backyard of this property and found superficial, superficial levels of high levels of contamination, say PCBs. And they were high enough that even though nobody's actively at the property, they were high enough levels of PCBs that even a trespasser walking through the property, getting stuff on their shoes, that could pose, that could pose a risk, that could pose an imminent hazard. That would be the type of imminent hazard that we would be talking about at a property like this. And what the Commonwealth would tell the town is, can you put up a temporary construction fence around the area that has this high levels of soil to keep trespassers out? So it's not dig up all this soil and transport it to Ohio for disposal. It's put up a fence with a no trespassing sign and doesn't even need to be like a permanent fence. You know, a construction fence would be fine. So, so a lot of people see that that provision of the regulations where they go, oh, we might, we might be on the hook for an imminent hazard. It's just to, just to abate it to stop people from coming in contact with it. That's what it would be. Like if this was a property that was currently occupied and the imminent hazard was because of vapors coming up from the, from underneath the sub slab of the building, how you would abate the imminent hazard is you would, you know, pump up the HVAC system so there was more air circulation in the building. You put in fans, you put in APU systems, you know, not enormous things that, you know, they can be relatively small. So to abate an imminent hazard is just basically to keep humans from coming in contact with it. And it's not expensive and, and not a big deal. Yeah, it's not, it's not transporting soil by rail car to Ohio. It's putting up fence, turning on the fans. The easy stuff.
I, I have one thought. If in fact, we go this route and like again, if the Home for the Vets step forward and they want this property, they would have to take over the, the getting a hold of the, like the family and, and taking real ownership of this property or finding, you know, going to the registry of deeds and doing all that, that work as far as being able to truly own the property. And what does happen if they do it, then they're held responsible for any of the other issues on that property?
Okay, so there's sort of two questions there. The first is if somebody wanted to just buy the property from whoever the current owner is. Kate might be able to speak to this with more clarity, but it's my understanding that over the years, the department has basically determined the entity that owns it doesn't exist anymore. There, there, there basically isn't an entity to buy it from. Kate, if you want to put some more meat on the bones for that one?
No, that's, that's, yep, that's a concise and correct statement. Without going into too much detail, the entities that operated Decore Manufacturing property are no longer living and the, the inheriting score of the estate are no longer with us as well. And the former tenant, who never had ownership of the property, did abandon the property in 2018.
Right, because it would be.
So the only, the only real mechanism to get this property back on any viable tax rolls and do anything, the mechanism that needs to be used is a tax taking by the town. And that's what that mechanism is written by the legislature for.
Do you want me to say, Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt that.
Go ahead.
In my background, you know, my name is Attorney Sean Murphy. I'm also a former city solicitor and have extensive experience dealing with code enforcement in abandoned properties. Have you considered a property, putting the property into receivership? Some of the liens that you had spoke about, not the municipal liens, but some of the other liens extinguished by receivership because of the way that works.
Yeah. Okay, historically, no. The Commonwealth does not want to own property. The Commonwealth does not want to be the receiver to properties like this. The Commonwealth believes.
Let me, let me explain. I receive a third part of receivership through the housing court. It would not be the Commonwealth is not the receiver. I'm saying that the city, the town puts the property into receivership, applies to receivership, petitions the housing court. The housing court has a list of receivers that's put on that list. One of those is appointed. Many of the liens are extinguished, but the town's tax liens are paid off by that receiver. The receiver brings that property back within code and then auctions it off.
Yeah. Um, the law, the Brownfields law that talks to how the communities, uh, municipalities are shielded from liability, um, is through tax taking under the appropriate tax taking titles, not through receiverships and things like that. So, um, the legislature wants basically towns to, you know, go forward with tax takings appropriately on properties like this, exert control over them and then, um, sell them to redevelopers. That's how the legislature sort of in these circumstance wants the process to work. And that's how the liability shield is structured. If the town gets the property through a mechanism that isn't spelled out in the Brownfield statute in 21E, um, the question of is the town liable becomes a question that you're going to have to go to the attorney general's office for and try to get some resolution. Um, and they're gonna, they're, I'm sorry, what?
In receivership, the town never takes title.
Yeah. Yeah. I, you know, that, that's a, that's a nuance that you're going to, that you would have to basically have town council talk to the attorney general's office with respect to the, how this process would potentially work. And if it opens the town up to liability, um, it's not the process that's spelled out in our regulations. So you would be doing something that's, you would be sort of, you know, charting your own path on that one. But that's not to say it couldn't be done, but you're going to need to get a team of lawyers talking to the AG's office. We can put you in contact with Betsy Harper, who heads up the environmental division. She's responsible for things that we call covenant not to sue's. So we could, you know, we could get that conversation going for you. But, um, but that's just not the way that the, the other communities around you are doing these frequently, and that's not the mechanism they're using.
Does anybody else have any input on it? Yes.
All right, Brian. Brian was before me.
Thank you. I guess my, my question is trying to dumb this down a little, make it a little easy for, uh, the, the citizens of Whitman to understand. Uh, my question is can, uh, the town of Whitman through the court get access to the property without owning it to do these tests to see how things are to put in motion these, uh, possible, uh, conclusions without being liable?
Could you? Could we? That's a question that you're going to have to have town council possibly talk with the attorney generals about, attorney general's office about. To most towns do not do that. And that is not the mechanism that the legislature wrote up in 1998 for towns to deal with these properties. Again, you could chart your own course, but that's not the normal recipe.
Yes, yes, Randy.
I, I think that this is going back to what I've been saying throughout this entire process, that Mast DEP has a process to follow. It's pre, it's pretty clearly defined as the gentleman just said it. We are not doing that process. You, you've heard John say, mention lawyers, get town council, petition AGs.
Our money.
Put up, it's money. It's obviously more money than the three to $4,000 we've initially talked about. There's the process. We need to follow it. It, it may be long and drawn out. It, it, it's a matter of taking ownership of the property, which I've said from the beginning, seemed to be the first start. You know, the fee agreement on this, I, I appreciate the work. I think we all sit here and, and absolutely are all under the same, uh, a, agreement that cleaning up brownfields in our town is a fantastic idea. But to make sure the citizens and the taxpayers of our town don't go on the hook for something, it's follow the process, which is slightly different, obviously, than what has been spelled out to this point. Uh, so, uh, not to really prolong this meeting. I think we, we've gotten our answers. And I, I think the steps forward, we, we've just heard them. It, it's takes, it's take this in tax title and obviously set up a, a meeting at some point with, um, hopes for heroes to, to possibly hear their plan. But i- if we were talking fees and what this was going to cost us, and it's obviously more than the three to $4,000 that was spelled out.
Right. Randy, I kind of agree with that, except for one thing. I would like to hear hopes from heroes exactly what their process is because if we take this in tax title, do we own it? And then our, and if hopes for heroes does not work out, are we on the hook?
Right. Well.
And that's the, that's the problem that I see because I, right. Um, I think even if we take this in tax title, even if we, uh, get somebody to purchase the land, I think we're going to spend a lot of taxpayers' dollars cleaning it up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, and Kate, I believe this was one of the questions I, I asked you, Kate. Uh, um, that, no, when I said hopes for heroes, Dan, just have them come into one of our meetings and obviously make a presentation.
Yeah. Yeah.
From their letter to, to the board this morning, uh, through Ms. Wright. They're a nonprofit. So
Right.
It, it, you know, this may be something the board, uh, has to look at. Do, do we want a, something that's producing more of a tax base down there? If we're going to take this, this chance. Um, but Kate, as you said, if we do the, I, I believe you said, I, I don't want to quote you, that with, under the protections we're provided, it's once we take it, the state expects the town to di- divert ourselves rather in, in a very quickly manner. And that's why having a developer in line i- is the, the more of the best route to go that we're, we're only, I think you said it's, we have like a limited liability time if we should take ownership. We, maybe you can, if I didn't understand you correctly, just kind of, uh, expound on that a little bit more.
Okay. Dan, if I may, I think Angela Gallagher had her hand up as well, um, for.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. I just wanted to say that I, I think you, you're aware of the targeted brownfields assessment process, uh, through Regal Shoe. Um, that is a, you don't have to have ownership of the property. You don't even have to secure access to the property. The EPA administers that assessment and they will also secure access. Uh, or they will do their best to secure access. And if they can't, then they can also do the evaluation around the property. And that has to be a request from the town or from, um, like a planning agency in order to get that assessment completed. That is of no, there is no fees associated or costs associated to the town. The EPA picks that up completely. It's on a rolling basis. You just have to make an application or ma, you know, contact the correct EPA personnel for that. Um, I just wanted to make you aware of that because you're talking about cost and liability.
Now, that's the Regal property, which was under different federal guidance, guidelines, correctly? Correct me if I'm wrong.
From what I was told, that Regal had, had utilized a targeted brownfields assessment. You can also do that for Decore.
Seems like a route to go.
Right. My point is that, um, I'm not really looking, I mean, I'd be nice to have tax, put it back on the tax rate. But my main thing is to get that property cleaned up and used because it's a building there. I understand the Regal property where, uh, we're looking at to see if we can develop that. That's all trees and woods. I have no worries that anybody will go in, break into a building because there's no building there. I do have personal worries that somebody may go into that building in the winter and possibly, uh, uh, because of no heat, maybe start a fire to keep warm and maybe get injured. I don't want the town to be responsible for that. That's why I'm, I, I want that, the BFI building, we need to get that, whether it's on the tax roll or if Home for Heroes or regardless of what it is, as long as it's cleaned up, being used and not a danger to anybody or this town. That's my primary goal. Yes, uh, Brandon.
Chairman, um, uh, I, I would direct this at John, um, where Dan just meant, mentioned the building. Um, do you know if, um, under 21E or any liability that if we go into a property which we don't own and start doing any destructive testing in that building, uh, i- is that liability? Are, are we shielded from anything if we go in there and start, you know, drilling into the floor and asbestos testing and things like that? Or is, is that a brownfield situation or are we now moving outside of brownfields?
Well, asbestos isn't covered, um, by the program that we work in. So that's a, that's a different matter entirely. Um, it, it, it's kind of a scenario that never happens, but you know, if, if the town had control of the property and the town had contractors in there to do anything to it, um, you know, secure it from vandalism or do environmental work. And the former operators of the property had left a 55 gallon drum of TCE behind and your contractors knocked it over. You caused that release and Whitman would be, you know, part of that. Um, that's just, you know, if Whitman, if your contractors were in the building and, you know, blew through a wall that had asbestos in it, strangely, the town, the Commonwealth would look at Whitman and say, you guys made a mess. You guys have to clean it up. I mean, I think, I think that's kind of logical.
Right.
Um, in practical standpoint, most consultants don't go into buildings kicking over drums of solvents and knocking through walls of asbestos. So, you know, if you have a team, you, if you hire a team that you have confidence in, it's not really a thing that happens.
So that would be, I guess, termed a new release condition? Is, is that what you call that?
Yeah. Yeah, basically. Yeah.
All right. And I think we've actually seen that in our town. I, I know you just said it was rare, but
Yeah.
You saw that, uh, back when we did the whole school.
Right. Absolutely.
So it.
You had a contractor go into a property and just blast through an asbestos wall?
No, we had a, we had a, we had a company come in and look for asbestos or any type of thing. And they missed an area that did have it, a pipe that had it that went the length of the building. And so then when we, the contractors come in to knock it down to build our new police station, of course, once they hit that pipe.
Yeah, it was scum men.
The entire building. And we couldn't go after the person who did the, uh, site work as far as, you know, removing or telling us where all the asbestos was.
Yeah, that's, and, and that's, I'm sure you understand, it's not really 21E liability. It's just whenever you have some amount of control over something, you have some amount of, not, not so much liability. You have some amount of responsibility for it. Um, and most towns don't find that level of responsibility where they've taken a hazardous waste site for back taxes and are proceeding with some cleanup and looking to redevelop it. Most towns don't find that general responsibility about controlling a property to be in, you know, undue hurdle.
Right. Well, what I'm hearing is the BFI building is in pretty good shape inside. They left it pretty good. That's a, you know, we've had a, a fire chief go in there to make sure it was safe as far as fire conditions and things like that. And they said it's fairly clean. So, which is good. So, but whatever. Um, so where do we go from here? Do we make, do we say, uh, we want to get involved and hire uh, environmentalists to go in and, and, um, start the process that Lisa wanted to get started in the beginning? Uh, where are we going from here? Lisa, do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, just, um, to, to clarify, um, we have the firm of Myers and Harrington, uh, who initially assisted us with the Regal property in obtaining an administrative, um, warrant from the hu- housing court to allow us, um, administrative access to Regal to conduct the site, site assessment. Um, so Angela had mentioned a, a mechanism through the EPA, uh, where we can make an application to access to the property. You also mentioned we could possibly do that for the Decore Novelties building as well?
Yes. Um, you can make the application or the request actually to EPA. Um, I don't know if you've worked with Jim Burton at EPA?
Okay.
I can send you contact information if you need that.
Okay, that'd be great. So in that case, we really wouldn't need, um, to bring on the environmental, um, lawyers of Myers and Harrington to have us, um, gain access to the property through the housing court. We could bypass that and go through the EPA, um, for that process.
Possibly. Because the EPA would secure getting access. I don't know what happens if they absolutely can't get access. Um, they've run into access issues before on different properties. So hopefully they have ways of getting around that.
Just quick question while we have Mast DEP here.
Yes, go right ahead.
Does that in any way conflict now with your, if we choose a federal route, does it conflict with Mast DEP brownfields?
No, this is just basically the town of Whitman looking for pots of money. Um, and they are out there. So we talked earlier about what's the normal process that towns go through when they sort of want to do a brownfield? And a key early step is hiring an LSP, hiring an outside environmental firm that works with municipalities frequently. Those people know where the pots of money are. Um, they know where Mary Ellen's checkbook is and they know how to get to Mary Ellen to get that checkbook. They know where EPA's checkbook is and they know how to fill out these applications in ways to make them a little bit more sparkly for EPA, a little bit more sparkly for mass development. But the pots of money are not infinite, but a good environmental professional knows where they are and knows where to get them and can be your first key point in a successful brownfields project.
Go ahead, Lisa.
And I, um, we've had discussions with Tracy Costa of Ransom, um, consulting who has assisted us with Regal and, um, has, uh, we presented us with a proposal for the, um, Decore Novelties building as well. So, um, we have, we have ventured into those discussions with her to help us again with both of those properties. And I, I believe she's spoken with you, Kate, um, a- as well on, um, Decore Novelties.
Okay. Uh, does anybody, any other members of the board, Justin, we haven't heard from you. Um, any thoughts? Are you here with us, Justin?
I am. I'm, I'm cutting in and out of the meeting right now.
I can't.
I think he's in another meeting as well.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, I, I caught he's cutting in and out. So I think he has a bad connection.
All right. Um.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, um, what, what, uh, uh, John just, um, mentioned, uh, about the, um, the proper steps and how we should go about that. I really like that idea. Um, I think that, uh, I think that's the way we should go, uh, in my opinion. I think, um, it seems to me that that might be the, the smartest path and, and, uh, less painful path, I think, for us to, uh, at least do our initial due diligence and, um, and the smallest amount of investment, I think, in the, in the town. But remember, we're investing in the town of Whitman and trying to make it a better place. So, um, I think that by doing what John said, might be, uh, the steps we need to take right off the bat in, in accordance with, uh, what, uh, Mary Beth Carter is doing. So I think it all falls into the right plan.
That makes sense. Kyle, you have any thoughts on that?
No, that, the simplest route is, is the route I would, I would like to take and the one that protects us the most. Um, I really am happy with, uh, it's a good thing we had John, John and, and, uh, and Katie here because it's, uh, they helped Chris, they helped make it clear to me what the process probably ought to be. It looks like the reason why we came together in the first place today to okay, a fee agreement for special counsel for environmental site work is easily handled. Not the answer to that, if I'm following all of this is no. Um, and the, the first step would be to go to, um, the, uh, the LSP and then to follow the, um, the, the normal route that John has outlined. This, am I hearing, am I hearing things correctly?
I got Randy? Yes?
Um, I, I absolutely agree with Kyle. Um, I will say that, uh, I will be a no on the fee agreement when it does come to vote. Um, absolutely LSP, but we're obviously going to have to have ransom come back because in either scope of their proposals for scope of work does not include any, uh, it, any, um, mention of doing groundfields investigation or trying to help us with grants or anything like that. And they haven't to this point. And they haven't to this point. As a matter of fact, if it wasn't for Ms. Gallagher, we probably wouldn't even know and John, that they assist in things like that. So i- it, it's a good idea and I believe the grants have been filed for, which could cover some of the costs. That, that would cover ransom or possibly let's have a couple other consulting firms come in and give us proposals on this. So I, at this point, I would just make, thank everyone for their time and I'd make the motion. To deny Myers and Harrington's fee agreement.
Do you hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further? Kyle, right, any further discussion? That being said, Kyle?
Yeah, the motion, the motion is to deny, so I'll, I'll vote yes.
Yes, right, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin, are you up?
Yep, I'm here and I go yes.
Yes, and I'll go with yes, so it's full, so we'll do it that way. So our next step, Lisa, is to do what now?
Well, to look into LSP. And I can answer Randy's question regarding the grants. Tracy Costa has been very instrumental with helping with grants. And she does know about the EPA grant programs. She, again, she's had, um, some conversations with me regarding helping with any grant applications. Looking into more EPA and I'm sure I can get her, ask her to update her proposal to include. Those scopes of works as well. And, and I can certainly reach out to other LSPs to get proposals from them as well.
Okay. So that's the route that we're gonna take, as long as that property is, uh.
Obviously continue with tax title taking. John's recommendation as, as the normal course of action on this.
Right, so we need to get a hold of, uh, Mary Beth, I treasurer, and have her start the process. Lisa, talk to her.
I believe she started it on.
She already started?
She has started the process, yes.
Okay, alright, that's the way we go. Uh, any other discussion for this meeting today?
Just to thank everyone for taking the time out of their day to.
Right, it was very informative, we, I'm, I'm just glad that we've come to some. Unified agreement on what we're gonna do with that property and how to either get it on the tackle. But anyway, get it cleaned up and get it secured so that there's no harm in the future with that building. So that being said, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Second? Second?
Second, I'll second.
Alright, second by Brian, roll call, Randy? Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank everybody for bringing this meeting together and we'll see you tomorrow morning.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate all your, your information, thank you.